Next item on our agenda is the Virginia 250 Committee, Mr. Jeff Arrington.
I'm going to hand a couple of brochures, if you want to take one and pass one around. Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Arrington. I am the chairman of the VA 250 Committee that was appointed by the previous board. Last year was our first year operating in Scott County. And I just want to take a moment just to say thank you all for having me here. I know some of the faces, some of the faces are familiar, some of the faces are new. But congratulations to the new members. I know it's not your first meeting, but it's always good to have you guys here. You all have now volunteered for some late nights, long meetings, abuse, and that's just part of public service, right? So that's just part of it. It's good to be here and thank you all for having me here. So I do have a two-part update for you, so there's some good news and bad news. The good news is most of the presentations is just an informative update and some information for you. As I know you've got more coming tonight, there's some more financial requests. Bad news is we also have a financial request. But closing with a little bit of good news, it's probably going to be one of the more, maybe the smaller side of financial requests. So we'll see. But a little bit more about VA 250 and what that is, for some of you may not be familiar with that. The VA 250 program started as a federal program to celebrate the upcoming 250-year anniversary of the United States in 2026. It was pushed down to the state level and ultimately down to the county level. And we are 100% volunteer group. And our task is, again, just trying to build some excitement that promotes, along with partnership with tourism and building economic development in the county around the upcoming 250-year anniversary in 2026. So, and I do have a present, but thank you, I appreciate that. I'm not going to take a long time tonight because it's already been a good long night. I know there's several other presentations afterwards. But I want to, again, talking about the update, I'm not going to sit there and bore you guys with the visual data, but you've got the slides, you can go over that. And apologize for the tiny text, but from this, just take that what we did in 2023, again, we are 100% volunteer organization. We had several different events that we partnered with different folks in 2023, different groups within the county, as well as even some groups in Kentucky. We're working with some groups in Tennessee as well. So it's, you know, of course, obviously being a federal program initially, it spans all the states. So we're trying to work with everyone we can. Something to point out with these specific events that we were able to do, and we're going to touch on this a little bit more as we transition into the request, we worked with the previous board, there was, we came and asked for some financial funding. It was in relation to a grant. Again, some of you may or may not be familiar with that. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail unless you have some questions about that. But the ultimate decision was, we ended up not applying for the grant based upon recommendations from the last board, recommendations that we agreed with. But unfortunately, the funding that we had requested never was able to get fulfilled for a number of reasons. So all the events that you see that we were able to participate in last year were events that were 100% either volunteer events. We were able to get some funding through Scott County Tourism when we could partner with Scott County Tourism appropriately. But the last one, I want to point out, some of the flowers, some of the banners, some of the actors and addressed actors we had were paid for by private volunteer dollars. And, you know, in Scott County, we live in a beautiful county, it's a beautiful rural county. We think about some of our greatest valuable assets being the natural resources and history we have, which is partially what we're here, certainly to highlight. But truly, the most valuable assets and resources we have are the volunteers and the people. Several of the volunteers in this room, first responders, things along those lines, and the same as the folks that are serving on this and just like you folks that are also here giving your time. So, but I do want to just highlight that, you know, we are working on very limited budgets. But the ultimate goal, as we build up and celebrate for this 250-year anniversary, is to bring awareness of our history and some of the natural resources that are part of our history, and ultimately really to build up more economic dollars that are spent near the county. Tourism brings in dollars. The more that we can promote some of the natural resources and some of the natural historical and man-made historical perspectives and points in the county, it brings people to the county. And I can assure you, we could pull the numbers, but there certainly are folks that come here from long ways away just for some of those historical aspects. Some of the, obviously, some more popular ones, Natural Tunnel, Carter Family Fold, just amongst some of the larger ones, Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association and others. So anyways, from this slide, I just hope you can take from that that, you know, we started behind the gun because the program actually started the year before. But the 2023 serves as a good year for our group to get our feet underneath ourselves. And I feel like now we've got the right momentum and we're, we finally caught up, if you will, and we're transitioning into 2024. So again, I apologize for the tiny text, some of that's microscopic, but I can, I can talk about what some of that essentially is. I'm not going to go through each one of these. Again, the point here is I want you to take away from this slide is that we are continuing to work into 2024. We've got a lot of exciting things going on. We're partnering with groups, I mentioned Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, Scott County Tourism, Heart of Appalachia, the Kentucky 250 Program, Boone Trace, other counties, Sullivan County, Washington County, we're reaching out to some different counties, trying to plan some different events. Because a lot of these events, you know, a lot of our history doesn't just include just Scott County, right? It's in use with other events that occur, Boone Trace being one of those, you know, some of the other programs, some of the Crooked Road is part of our history that spans. We've got old history and we've got more modern history. And part of that is all of our story that builds Scott County. So again, from this slide, I just want you to take the fact that we, we are already working on 2024, we've got some items in place. And our major partner this year is the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association. We are going to work very, very closely with them as we continue to move forward. Certainly, we try to take advantage of any opportunity we can when we can do things without spending any money. We're on social media. The slides, I assume, will be made available to you guys later on. If you want to, you can email me, I can get you a copy of them. The last slide that I'm not going to go to, but there's an addendum slide that has some of our online resources, Facebook page, that's one of our, that's our primary social media resource. And the events in 2023, and as we move into 2024, you'll be able to follow those and see what's going on there. So now, as far as, well, I'm just going to stay on the previous slide, I'm going to go to Speaker of the Bureau. That kind of brings us up with a little bit of the information and tells you a little bit about what VA 250 is about. I do want to touch a little bit, and just as a reminder of the previous financial requests, the budget we had came for and requested last time, we had an operating budget and we were looking at about $24,000. Most of this budget was around marketing content, advertising, there was going to be some expenses on some of the outfits and reenactment type of materials. A lot of that, some of that has already been purchased, but essentially, the majority of it was marketing. In order to be able to advertise about our history, it takes advertising, it takes marketing. And so we had requested $24,000, excuse me, we had actually came to the board requesting $10,000, trying to get a $10,000 matching grant. We knew we were still going to come up short of our $24,000. I can tell you right now, we spent more than $4,000 in private funds in last year's operations. So we had said that we would probably figure out a way to make that work, or we'll take whatever we can get and make it work. The, again, the decision was because based on the strings that were attached to those grants, it's a way, grants aren't like they used to historically be. If, some of you folks may be familiar with the way that past grants work, and it was, I'll just say maybe they were a little bit more giving in past years. You can just request a grant and you can get paid upfront. They went to more of the reimbursement style grants, and then they went to the matching grants, and then they went to your strings attached, et cetera, et cetera. And that's just where we live in, which is, you know, it's just the way it is. But the decision was made that the board said that they would try their best to try to pull some funds from available funds that were, I believe, excess funds for other projects. And again, number of reasons it just wasn't able to come through, we did the best that we could. So I come before you tonight with that same essentially budget. A lot of the things that we wanted to accomplish, I will bump back one more, the last part of this, so some of the graphic art items, some of the, some of the supplies we wanted to do, a marketing video we weren't able to do, a digital billboard, we would have liked to have done that last year, we weren't able to do some of those things. Something that's not listed on here, it's, it's part of our ultimate vision, we have what's called a legacy projects. Legacy projects are projects that will go beyond 2026. We've talked about a number of different things. We've talked about, you know, murals on different parts of the county, different parts of the county, different projects in some of the parks and some of the areas, different perhaps, I know that V-Dot was in their conversation, was talking about roadside items. You know, there's a number of different things that we've looked at, but we can't look at those things seriously until we know we have money to spend. And so we can get some of the cost for those, and we are certainly trying to always reach out to folks in the school. We've worked with some of the art teachers and continue to work with some of the school members to try to get more and more volunteers and get more youth involved. But, but again, we're coming to you essentially with that same budget request. I know it's a tough year, I know there's a lot of different things, but, but, you know, in order to, this, this is one of those efforts that in order to drive more revenue and more tourism in the county, you have to invest to make that happen. There certainly are a lot of very well-deserving and notable requests that are going to be made tonight, and I don't want to, you know, disregard any of those, but this is one of those that's an investment in our future. It's one of those investments that instead of just doing something that maybe takes away from the natural resources, you know, we can, we can look at economic development, we can bring in a manufacturer and put them in somewhere, or bring in more houses to generate tax revenue dollars. But another great way of trying to do that is just simply bringing in the visitors while we preserve what makes us unique versus just turning into what other counties may or may not already have to try to compete with them. We do have wonderful natural resources here, we do have a wonderfully rich history in Scott County, as I'm sure all of you know. So that's what we're, that's what we're asking for an investment in, that's what we're committed to doing. The, the group that we have, I don't, I should know the numbers off the top of my head, I apologize, it's been a long day, I don't know, it has been for you all as well, I don't know the exact number. We've got, at some of the events, we had as many as Pam, what do you think, probably 15 people, 20 people at some of the events maybe helping us out?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, that's just at one particular event perhaps. Some of you may have seen us at some of the parades, or you may have seen us at some of the events in Gate City or elsewhere, so. And I apologize, I could go on and on about some of, the constitutional programs is the perfect one, we do it within the schools, so we do try to integrate with the schools and work in the schools, talk about the Constitution, talk about what it was for, why it was important to the founding of our country, what it means to our heritage, what it means to our liberties and our freedoms. And again, that's just another piece that we all will try to do, to try to bring more importance to our history. So I don't know if there's anything else in particular, Pam, or anything else particular you want to cover?
I do, I do. So, so the next event that's upcoming for us, and we're working with the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, they are footing the majority of the bill for this, it's $4,000 plus. Because they are a nonprofit, they are also able to raise funds. So Delegate Kilgore has given a donation to, we are working on getting some funding from Eastman Credit Union and Food City to offset costs for that. But then there's a whole series of things that we want to try to accomplish. And some of those, there is grant funding available through some arts programs that are not where that we can, they're not marketing funds, but we can actually pay for programming for this. One of the funds is a $5,000 fund, you don't have to have a matching grant for that. We're going to, you know, we'll probably, we'll apply for that for a candlelot series. And they're kind of going back to reinvent some of the programming that they had done before, that they've, you know, kind of dropped off. There is another $10,000 grant that is through Humanities, that one is a match, it's a one-to-one match. So in order to apply for that grant, we have to have $10,000. We have to show that we have $10,000 and we have to, you know, doing all of these grants. And they're all coming open within the next, well, there's a Virginia Tourism Grant that's coming open, it's a marketing grant though, it's going to open this week. But then those other Humanities Grants and Arts Grants that come open probably in March. So that's kind of the reason, you know, there's no need to apply for them if we're not going to have any funding. But, you know, we are working with the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, and I think the lady who's kind of heading this up is a professional, she is a professional historian, actually. She worked for the National Art Service at Cumberland Gap. And what they're doing this year is, instead of doing the Harvest Fair and everything, they're kind of taking back, Sally may kind of want to help me here, they're kind of taking people back to where you would have been right before the American Revolution started. And it's going to be, she has several reenactors that she's paying for, well, that Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association is paying for. So it will be a very interesting event. It will be a two-day event, and I think they will also, I think they're going to also bring back the auction. So, and maybe be serving some food, and it will be, I encourage all of you all to come to that event, it is free. I don't think they're going to charge for parking like they normally do at Natural Tunnel, it will be up at the Block House. So, and one of the, another one of the legacy projects that they're working on doing is creating a loom house and to go up at the Block House, they took down a log cabin last year, a couple of years ago, and it's been donated to them, so they're going to resurrect that, they're talking about doing that. There will not be any muster this year. The state has kind of put the quietness on having anything to, I don't know, don't ask me, anything to do with fighting.
It's intentional, ask us to celebrate a revolution by saying, let's not talk about any battles.
Yeah, yeah, just don't talk about any battles, I mean, we, we-
Kind of hard to do that.
It is hard to do, but we've, we just walked up and said hello, we'd like our freedom and please give it to us, but we will do, do no battles. So there will be, you know, everything has to be very, it's very strict with the state, so.
So we show up and we still walk around in our muskets and?
Yeah, yeah. And costumes and, you know, things like that. So, yeah, I mean, they do have a lot of programming that they do have scheduled and set up.
There's restrictions through, through the state program as far as what they recommend, but we also do with our local volunteers and with the local organizations we work with, we, we certainly try to preserve the real history and to also know to be part of that history, if that makes sense. So we're in alignment on both sides of that, that's what I'm trying to say.
And I think, from what I've heard, I just listened in to the conversations, Pam Eddie has a tremendous program planned for this. She was at the Harvest Festival and did the tea room and everything and let people drink real teas from that time period. So it went over very well, and then, you know, they did the tea and everything, so anyway. So yes, thank you very much. We really, they really would appreciate some money.
We're going to make do with whatever we can get and anything we can get from you guys, we certainly do appreciate it. So, do you all have any questions for us?
Just give us some time to discuss it.
Sorry, man.
Great, pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, what are you asking for, and is it before June 30th, or are you asking for money in next budget year?
Next.
What's your timeline?
Well, if we, if I apply for one of the arts grants, it'd need to be now, or no, we'd probably, it probably could go into the next budget year. So I don't know, yeah, that would probably work.
Into next year's, next year's budget or you're saying to the budget of this year, you say?
Next year's.
Year's budget.
Next year's budget, yeah, because I know they have an upcoming event that they want to do in October, and then they are bringing back the Yuletide Festival, the burning of the, what is it, the old Christmas, they're going to redo that again, so.
If we need to come back and give you another itemized list like we had last time, we had an itemized list that showed those individual budgets, we can certainly bring that back for you guys, where it's in the historical notes, I'm sure you all have those as well somewhere. So it's essentially the same funding, because a lot of the same things that we requested to try to do, we were not able to do. We simply just had to do with what we could and what we could afford on our own personal budgets. So it's, it's not changed drastically from there, we just basically weren't able to achieve some of the things we wanted to do this past year, and they would essentially go toward those. For the most part, a lot of the same exact marketing items that we can do. We do the best that we can with social media, but there certainly is a lot more we could do if we had some available funding.
So Jeff, we appreciate the role you've taken, and Pam, I want to say we went to Richmond last week. I picked up a magazine in the hotel room, and it was a half-page that looked great.
Thank you.
I don't remember what the name of it-
It was the Broad's Magazine.
It was the Broad's Magazine.
It was good.
Well, I will, I will, there's a, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but there's a story that goes with that. So for years, I guess maybe four or five years, the ad rep from, ad rep from Virginia, from that magazine, from Virginia Living, had called me and said, would you please advertise? Well, they had not really our target market, and they hadn't been our target market. And I was like, you know, you really don't do a lot for southwest Virginia, but in the past, but they started doing that. And I had talked to him about the featuring the Crooked River Lodge in the wedding venue. And I said, if you ever do that, he said, I told him, I said, I'll buy an ad. And he said, well, we don't work like that. So I sent it on to the editors and everything, and so finally, if you saw, there was a two, three-page story on the Crooked River Lodge in Mendota, well, it's not in Mendota, it's in Hiltons. And so, so I had to buy an ad. So I did have to buy an ad, and then he left. I told him, I said, ooh, I feel really bad. He said, well, that was my coup de grace or coup d'etat, whatever the word is, you know, that was his crowning achievement was getting Scott County in there, so.
Oh, it looked great.
Thanks. Well, now, that was professionally designed, it was my thing, so.
Jeff, get back to us.
Absolutely, okay, we'll go back, we'll certainly come back, and we'll bring you some more detail.
Very great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Weber City Fire Department has got a great building, they've done a lot of work on it, and Bruce, would you want us, would you want to tell us what's going on with your doors?
Oh, thank you. Thank you guys, I'm Bruce Cross, Chief of Weber City Volunteer Fire Department. We've got a project going on down there, and we're trying to get into this building a little quicker than we hoped we wanted to, but we're trying to get into the building quicker. We've been working on the, the firehouse diner, got him up and going, we got the ax house, I think it's going to be open in a couple of weeks, and we're working on our venue area. We about got that completed, so we can start renting that out for various agendas. We're completing some bathrooms, we're putting more bathrooms in. And what we're trying to work on right now, we had General Shell donate like 3,000 block to do our fire barrier wall because we, where our trucks and bays and everything's going to be, we have to build a fire barrier wall. General Shell donated us 3,000 block to do that. We've got some equipment right now that's sitting outside, and we're trying to get it all in because, as we all know what's happened in the past three weeks, when this equipment sits outside and you've got something going on, we've got to deal with trying to get all the snow and ice off of it. So we're trying to get three more doors bought and purchased and put in. We, we had bought one, but we got on our front, we bought the door that goes into the back, so, because we're going to have a drive-through bay, and we're needing three doors for out front, so we're going to separate our trucks out, so whichever one needs to go out, you know, we're not going to finagle around, so we're going to put three doors in the front. But we've got an estimate here on the three doors, we're asking for help with that to get those purchased, so we can actually start getting some equipment in that building. I'm hoping, you know, with all the income coming off the others and with the rental off the venue area, I'm trying, I'm shooting for a fire station that's going to self-sustain itself, that's what I'm after, that's my goal. Because once we get everything producing income, I think it can sustain itself. And the ultimate thing that I'm trying to do is, I want to get at least three firefighters there, paid firefighters, during the daytime especially, when everybody's at work, and I think it will have the potential and income to do that. But anyway, the doors, we got a quote right here on the doors, they will be glass doors, aluminum frame, powder coated black, one glass, so we can just show off the front building, because it's going to be an awesome building once it's completed. But the quote on the doors is, and this is installed, $31,993, that's what the quote is. And that's kind of what we're asking for. If you can help us find, if you can't, we understand, but that is one thing right there that we are desperately needing. We do have the heating and cooling systems to put in the building, we already have those purchased, we just got to get them installed. We have to build that barrier wall first to separate that truck bay area from the rest of this fire station. And that, we're going to try to start working on that as soon as we can. But I'm concentrating pretty heavily right now on the venue side, so we can get that completed and we can start renting it out. Because we built a stage in there, we had a little Christmas event down there, and when they, you know, came to the Christmas event, and then we had actually, a church came in and they did a New Year's Eve, they had a church service down there. And we're, we're just about ready to complete that one. We like just a little bit on it, and, but what we're really trying to concentrate on now is, we're going to kind of move over to the other section and get those walls and stuff built, and get these doors in. Because we got, like I said, we got some stuff sitting outside, and we need to get it inside. But if you can help us with it, you know, fine, we would greatly appreciate it, and anything you do, you know, we'll take it. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them, and just leave it at that, get out of here.
Tell them we got, you all want to fix a place where people's houses burn and stuff, that you could take them in and-
Oh, yeah, well, in the venue area, excuse me, I'm thirsty. In the venue area, we built, we built a 16-by-24-foot stage, and in behind that, I actually put a, putting a green room in, and I'm calling the green room for the bands and stuff, because I've got some bands wanting to come in, and I'm fixing a private area for them where they can just come and go, have their own private bathroom and shower and stuff. And everybody's going, why are you putting a shower in there? Well, I have experienced a lot of total house fires, and I've called, you know, Red Cross, like, they're great to come out, but sometimes they're slow. And I've had to walk off and leave people standing in their yard, looking at nothing, barely having clothes on. I've actually taken my jacket and stuff off and gave it to them. But it's amazing to me how many people in this area, and we're kind of a close-knit county, but there's a lot of people here that don't have family here, they're five, six, seven hours away. And I have had to walk off, especially one, I had one down in Stanley Valley, she didn't have anybody. And the neighbors, she didn't really know her neighbors, but some of the neighbors did step up. And, you know, before I left there, I just went down just to kind of console her, and then I had to just walk away, and then I walked back, and I thought, man, this lady has nobody. And our station we're in right now is not people-friendly, it's really just not friendly at all. I wanted to bring her back to my station and just let Red Cross come there and get her, but I couldn't really do that because our station is just not people-friendly. So, you know, what I'm doing now with that quote green room, that situation happens to anyone, our door will always be open. We will be able to give you a bathroom and a shower, some food, and a place to rest your head for the night, collect your thoughts. Because that has bothered me more than anything I've ever done, is walking off and leaving them. And I thought more and more about it, and I thought, I'm going to fix that problem. And that, you know, even our station, when we get up and going, we're going to have actually a decon area back there, a hot zone. Anybody that gets in trouble, gets contaminated with something, you'll be able to come there, police, fire, anybody, you'll be able to come there and decon, get the contaminants off of you, we can put your clothes in the laundry, whatever, and get you cleaned up instead of trying to take the fire trucks out, because we've had to do that. And just literally, if you all are contaminated, I stand right here at the water hose, and I spray you down, and it's not warm water. So that area is also going to be available to everybody. But anyway, that's kind of what we came here tonight to request, if you can help us, that's what we're just asking for. So if you have any other questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
What's the timeline on when you need these?
Well, we like to get the doors purchased as soon as we can because there's going to be a price increase, we kind of encounter a lot of that stuff. Right now, you know, we've got a pretty good price on the doors, there's going to be three doors, one's 14-by-12 and two 12-by-12s. And they're going to be powder-coated aluminum glass doors, which will be insulated glass. But like I said, I'm, do we need that kind of a door? No. But this station's going to be kind of unique, and it's going to be kind of set aside from everything else. The front area, when you walk in right there in the glass-in area, we've separated that now from the venue areas- So there's going to be an area there that I can actually rent out again to someone else. But my purpose of that area right there is I'm going to put a fire museum in. We've got a 1926 fire truck in our name. And I'm collecting all, all kinds of old fire memorabilia stuff. And when I bring the kids to school for like, um, um, when we do our fire prevention set, I can bring those kids in, we put an old 50 style soda fountain bar, we had that donated to us. And I'm going to get that thing hooked back up so I can give kids soda fountain, um, ice cream fountain, soda fountain, stuff like that, and popcorn and stuff, stuff for the kids. It's going, I'm going to make it very kid friendly. But that area right there, so when I bring the kids down, they'll have a nice station to come to and we can kind of entertain them because kids are kind of hard to entertain anyway. But that area right there is going to be available. And I've even had people come say, you're going to open that up on the weekend where we can come in and get ice cream? And I said, probably, you know, so it's, it's whatever the community wants. I want to do whatever the community wants. But you know, maybe my dreams and visions are a little bit too big for this, for this, that area. But I've seen a lot of stuff go on and I'm trying to try to change some of that. But it's going to be a great project. I've enjoyed doing it, it's been hard, but, and I have to thank all the fire members because every one of them has dedicated their time. They, we've done a lot of work, we've been hanging a lot of sheet rock. Thankful to Lowe's, Lowe's has donated a lot of stuff to us also. But anyway, I'll let the others come up and speak unless you guys got something else to say, if you're asking.
Cause they've watched you down down there and I know that the people do, they appreciate it.
Well, I'm, I'm excited about it and it's been a lot of hard work, but I'm, I'm not going to give up. Uh, I'm just going to keep trudging through it. We'll get it. It's just, I'd like to do it faster, but you know, we're taking the funds and stuff that the flea market and everything's producing. That's what's paying for everything down there. The flea market is actually paying for everything that we're doing. And we just need a little help here and there. You know, the town of Weber City has helped us a little bit, um, but I know money's not available and we'll get it. We'll, we'll get it. It's just.
We'd like to help you. We, we'll listen to all this and let Ms. Sarnes see what she can do with the budget and we'll, we'll discuss it.
Well, thank you.
See what we.
Thank you guys.
We met last week with the EMS services and. On the community, on Weber City, okay, alright. Let's discuss it and see what we want to do.
Unless you want a month to think about it, but that's up to you.
Any ideas?
I think we should help them, but I don't know, I don't know the amount.
Yeah, but I think that's the.
You have about 33,000 left in contingency that has to do till the end of June.
Is it 33 or 38?
Well, you spent five already tonight, so 33.
Daryl, what do you think?
Like I said, I, I want to help, but I don't know a number. I would like to, I'd like to give them the whole amount, but we can't. But whatever the board thinks we can, if y'all want to help, whatever the board thinks we can afford to give. Cause he is really trying to do a good thing for the community, I think. He's trying to supply a lot of stuff that the county needs. I reckon they're all volunteers, I don't reckon there's any paid people down there.
Is part of that building private and part of the public?
No, it's all belongs to the department. They're, they're paying payments on it, they pay quarterly payments on it so much. And they're taking that, I guess, out of the rent money and stuff and.
It's from New Image to the Old Food City, that section, they don't own the one across from Dollar Trees.
Yeah, they're collecting rent money off of New Image and the Firehouse Restaurant. And then they'll be collecting inner stuff at the axe store when they get in there. And I could say, I don't know, I don't know the amount, but y'all chime in, tell me your all's thoughts.
Have you done anything like this before? Do you have any kind of numbers?
Yeah, we've helped, let's see, we've helped Nicholsville Rescue and stuff before, way back. I don't know if we use your data or not. And we've, uh, we've helped different, we've helped with their parades and stuff like that. Fire departments and Duffield Days and all that, we've done stuff like that.
When we had the CARES Act and ARPA money, we helped a lot with.
I just wondered about the money.
And things like that.
The amounts that you might have spent or anything comparable to that, yes.
Not for the other fire departments?
No.
If that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I just, it seemed like you're having a hard time coming up with a number.
Yeah.
Most of these others have been a hundred to five.
Been what?
A hundred to, to $500 to help amount of different things. Horses would take a little bit more possibly.
I don't think they're asking first to pay for all of it. Weber City should still even help.
They're supposed to go and ask Weber City Town.
I think Weber City's got some.
Yeah, their request later, uh, the quote is on your tablet for the doors.
Wonder how much Weber City's donated to it since it's in, in Weber City's fire department.
I don't think they give them a lot right yet. We're trying to get some from them and they have some, Weber City has some, some kind of the ARPA funds or something left. They haven't committed on what they would give them yet, so I don't know.
Does anybody know when Weber City's supposed to give them something to?
Weber City should be a big contributor to it because it's taking care of the town. And the fire department is, but whether they do it or not, I don't know. Whether they will or not, I guess I should say.
Y'all think they vote out tonight or wait until next meeting?
You can do either one if you want to take time to think about it.
Y'all like to all think about it and wait until next meeting?
I think we need to do something, they're doing a lot for the community. Are there any additional grants that could be on top of what we're going to do over the year? That, it's the public business, uh, location. Is there any public grants that they could supply for?
I don't know what he has done for the department as far as if he's done any grants or not. Um, rural development may have grants that would help with our department. I don't know if he has done that or not.
You might want to run that by him, Daryl. I think we need to do something, I guess, just the amounts, I think we have difficulty with.
Is that being mentioned, 5,000? Would you all be comfortable with that, giving them, you have 33 left?
For 25, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I just.
We've got to start somewhere.
I think 5,000 is fair.
We have a motion?
Wait, 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 wait. Wait. How many fire departments do we have?
Seven.
But Theresa, I said I'd like to wait and see what Weber City would give to it.
I think. I mean, just because of the, no, that's okay. I didn't say that. I mean, I. I would not feel comfortable with giving money to one and not making a contribution to the rest of them. I mean, if we do a thousand dollars to them and then, I don't know, I just, I, I. I mean, somebody else can chime in anytime. I mean, I, I, I think we need to, I think, I do think we need to do something, absolutely. But I don't want to single out and just because Fort Blackmore isn't in the Weber City area and be able to do that for their folks. I don't know, I don't know, I'm torn, I'll be honest.
And it has to come out of contingency, right? Unless it's next, yeah, or general fund, let the line on go with the negative and.
Now let's take.
Appropriate it at the end.
We've got $33,000 and then we've got March, April, May, June. Right, four months before the.
And we're probably get ready to take a little bit more out there. I mean, you're always open and can wait till next month?
Yes.
Let's make a decision.
I think we need to hear from the EMS, that's what I was thinking to start with. Let's hear from the EMS and then talk about that. And fire department is, is 250, that's all quite a chunk, all three of them are.
250 being next year's.
Being next year's.
That's next year, but you're okay, these two then. Let's, let's listen to these fellows. And then see where we can go with it.
We'll just wait till next meeting, make a decision.
Let's listen to them first.
Okay. Okay.
Next is, uh, on the agenda is EMS. We met with the EMS, uh, Mr. Manus and I did, and Ms. Sarnes. And we allotted money to be used for the payroll support as needed. And that amount set aside is almost gone. Would one of you gentlemen want to come up and, Roger, you want to come up?
I think that's right. I like to see the watch.
The sheets that I gave you all was information that was taken from a request when we met with them last Monday. The chair and vice chair and board supervisors and myself and Ms. Bickers. They supplied us with their rescue recovery amounts that they had received for years 22 and 23. They also supplied us with payroll amounts from their Form 941s for 22 and 23. And I incorporated that into this spreadsheet with the amounts that they received from the county for payroll support. So they can tell you their needs, um, and the situation they're in with their billing agencies and such, just whatever they want to share. Uh, but we put in $200,000 for this budget year and that is about all gone. There's 40 some hundred dollars left at this point. So, um, to get them through the end of June, you may have to look at putting in some extra money, but we'll let them talk and give you their updates so that you know from them directly their situation.
I guess I'll lead off then.
I apologize for not naming all four of you, but I can't see you enough there, hell, it's my problem. I appreciate all of you.
It might be called sleepy there, Mr. Brick.
I'm sorry?
Might be called sleepy.
No, I just have problems.
I'm Roger Corr, I'm Chief Duffield Fire and Rescue. So we met with, uh, Mr. Brickie and Mr. Manus and Frida and Amy and I guess that was all those are. Uh, over the rescue money for the paid employees. So all three of the agencies man the stations 24/7. So you have Station Nicholsville, Station Gates City, Station Duffield. Man 24/7. Last year, 2023, just to give you a little bit of rundown really quick on that, there was 4,429 EMS calls ran in Scott County. That's a lot of calls, but we got to do something with them. It keeps three agencies very busy, thanks for that many calls in a year. So, uh, going along with some of that, the rescue, uh, the counties have to provide two years, I guess now. That is, be third, end of the third year.
Since COVID.
Yeah, since COVID. Due to the lack of reimbursement from insurance. So we are one of the agencies, we can't do anything about the, what we sell. We sell a service for emergency and traumatic injuries. The government tells us what they're going to pay us. We can't, we can say we're going to bill $750 a call or $1,200 a call. Don't mean anything other than your write offs are going to be bigger because your contractual agreements with all these insurance companies that says, this is what we're going to pay you, that's what you're going to take. So, you know, they like running your own private business. Well, I need to up that $10 or I need to up that a hundred dollars or whatever. That don't happen on what we do.
And some of ours, a big majority of ours is self-pay?
Self-pay and Virginia Medicaid. That's another big one. So on the billing, national average is about 35% collection rate. Just due to denials, uh, they say the ambulance not medically necessary. You know, just because a call ambulance don't make it paid for. If they deem it non-medically necessity, then they just deny. We don't have any other recourse. Oh, done deal, write off. So you have to run a certain amount of calls to make payroll. With that lower percentage now since COVID and stuff, since they pulled everything way back down, that's harder for us to make the payroll and keep the people there. You know, years ago, everything was volunteer, you could get a lot of volunteers. Well, that makeup changed several years ago. You know, I've done a presentation for the board here in 1999 or 2000, this very same thing. I said we'd face one of these days, have not paid EMS. And I also said about the fire department. It come because you can't get volunteers. Now, you all have to provide certain services, fire, EMS, law enforcement, street, you got to provide. You got to make sure the people took care of them. So we got to figure out how to get to the point that we can maintain that. And without paying these, and we pay them peanuts, guys. I mean, we're not, there's nobody, Frida's got the, I mean, the payroll stuff. Ain't nobody making a ton of money doing EMS, not doing nine in one calls. And me and Chris had this talk right after first year, I think, down there, went over some of this. But, uh, to keep the service, I mean, if, if we're going to turn the wheels and bad thing of it is an EMS that we hate to see, for us to pay payroll, we got to roll wheels. That means somebody's got to be sick or hurt. That's the bad part of this job. The wheels have got to turn. Wheels ain't turning, you ain't getting no payroll in at all, so.
It costs so much just for us to be there. So when you make that telephone call, there'll be somebody come. And we don't get paid just to be there.
How many people do you keep at each station?
Two.
Two?
Two, all squad are two.
What wire is that?
What wire, date 365, eight year. Two, everybody. And what, what the problem is, we, we bill, uh, we billed $374,000 in Nicholsville last year. We got 207,000 back. We got $90,000 from the camp. That made us pretty much eat. And those numbers are, and but we, we pay our, we pay our employees little to do a rough job.
We ask a lot of our employees.
I'd have to say that every time I've ever had to talk to you guys, you suck.
Here's what I gave them. You all want to take those and go through everything and.
Here's what I gave them. You all wanna take those and go through everything and make sure that I have done that correctly?
One thing online that I didn't include, our account is separate from anything else we got. It's separate, it's just for the, the recovery side of life. Is cost of doing businesses in that too. So there is a fee for the billing agencies, which is really our, it don't show in our payrolls on nine forty-ones because it's deducted out of the percentage. So if that makes sense. And then there's some gateways for billing that we all gotta pay and stuff like that. It's Medicare, I mean, stuff we gotta do. So there is some other stuff that comes out of there that we have no control over that. Has to be paid. It's cost of doing business. You have, I mean, there's no way out of it, so. Or you want us to go over here very shortly?
Yeah, that's just for you to take. To make sure the numbers are correct.
Yeah. Of course, the cost, some of those costs, like I said, it's not gonna be in all ours because I didn't, until you asked me about it, I didn't even think about all of those, but the biggest and other numbers. I know our billing agency in the last two years is twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that's gonna be figured in, so.
Now, one thing on, for Scott County, which let me say something. The money we've asked before and we've been getting from you all. We've only, Nicholsville, in Nicholsville, we have only used that for payroll. That's trick, we, we got a lot of other expenses. You all give us a budget other than payroll every year. But the payroll, the money that we are receiving for payroll, we can only use for payroll. And if we don't get that money from you all or from our billing company, then we don't, we have to send our boys home.
If you look on this sheet, twenty twenty-two, you can see how that, our receivable income varies from month to month. Sometimes it's sixteen thousand in August. It's twenty-nine thousand in November. But in February, it was five thousand. So we don't ever know what we're gonna get until we open our bank account and look. And on Tuesday, which was today, I look at my bank account and I say, how much money do I have to make payroll tomorrow? And that's when I request my money from the county. And I request enough to make payroll for that time.
Now, the rest of you said the same thing. It's this money that came from the county has gone toward payroll, correct?
My payroll basically, uh, every two weeks runs a little over eleven thousand dollars. I have payroll tomorrow. Here's my bank account. There ain't no other bank account. Ain't nothing there. That's that's how much they any payroll tomorrow. I don't, I don't wanna show you mine. About thirteen hundred dollars and my payroll today was ten thousand. There's nothing that I can do about that. I just have to take what's we receive from billing. And it's on this paper. We don't try to, we don't try to, uh, get the self-paid. I think in twenty-three, ours was thirty thousand. If somebody's self-paid in Scott County, we don't send them to collections. And the reason we don't do that is because we get some county funds. So that's thirty thousand that we're just, that's gone too.
Now, one thing we do, um, the money that we've received from the county, I take care of that money goes into county account. Nothing we use that far is for insurance, ambulance payments and equipment or supplies. Uh, as all of you know, we have bingo two times a week. And in the past, before COVID, it, it was a real good money-making project. But since COVID, it's probably about high for less than high for what it used to be. And also here in the last two months, we've had more mechanical problems than you can imagine. I can tell you how many thousands of dollars we spent on keeping our ambulances on the road, which we try to do that through, you know, our bingo money. But what we've done in the past on our payroll, when we didn't get no county money, we did pay bills out of that payroll money. God, that was just part of doing business. Because if your ambulance is going down, if you can't run them, you can't make no money. So we've just done what we've could do in the past several months. And like I said, it just hit us in the last two or three months harder than it's hit in a long time. And we never ever really recovered from COVID. So that's what's put us all three over right, right now.
The money was set aside for payroll only, not for ambulance or payroll, so, and not for bills and insurance.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's not the, it's other money that we've had, not what we got from county. We don't use that money for for other bills.
Go through this spreadsheet and let me know if I have something wrong because that shows you got a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars above what your payroll expenses were.
Okay. Since Janet takes care of that part of it, I can't know the exact number of the numbers.
Let her go through everything and let me know if I have made a mistake here.
Okay.
And the same with Nicholsville and Duffield as well?
We've not made no mistake with mine. In twenty twenty-two, I got thirty-six thousand dollars less than I needed. And in twenty twenty-three, I got eight thousand more than I needed. And that just still put me twenty-seven thousand dollars in the hole.
I know you talked one time, Roger, about us adding so much to the taxes that was put in an account for, for the rescue squads and I guess.
I don't think you can actually do that on the rescue squad side than you can the fire department.
That was the fire tax.
It's a fire tax. Rescue, I don't think, uh, has got any kind of, uh,
I think it can be for both.
Can it? Okay, Brian, that's
That's good to work. I mean, it's something.
I, I didn't know that it could be done on EMS side. I didn't know it could be done on the fire, because, but.
Maybe that's something we need to look at at budget time because the, the arc ammonia stuff's gone and it ain't gonna be back, I don't think.
Well, your fire department's definitely should be on the tax. I mean, that's no question.
That's, that's another thing that we've got to address. We, uh, as a firefighters association in Scott County, we have voted to ask for a fire tax in the next budget. But we wasn't gonna address that tonight. You all did.
That's a good job.
So we were gonna ask for three and a half.
Y'all opened the door. We stood.
Y'all opened the door. We're gonna come in. We, we are gonna ask for three and a half cents.
I don't think it's been a seven, several years.
It should be.
And then that would loosen up some money.
All the way around.
All the way around for EMS too. You think, what'd you say, three and a half cents?
Yeah.
Would do it.
The fire department gets a high, and if I don't ever hear from them again, they won't be back over there.
All this government money that's been fed down during COVID is, is disappearing. And the budget's gonna get tied again if we gonna have to do something. I don't know. Where that's the answer or?
And that's the same reason this, they're getting tight, but they've not loosened back up the reimbursements like, uh, you know, Medicare is not our best payer. It's not even in the top four, you know, but some of the HMOs is, you know, the Humana's and the, uh, Edna's and United Health Cares and stuff, they pay us better if we transport them than Medicare does.
There's one thing about it, we can't make it without you all.
Well, we can't. I mean.
Oh, we can't make it without you some of those.
Are you still having trouble with hauling all the jail inmates?
No, I can report. We only had two in two twenty twenty-three that was not paid.
Let me bring up one more thing that, that you all mentioned when we met before. And this may be a drop in the bucket and doesn't matter at all, but Roger says that he charges a hundred and twenty-five dollars for denials. And you all don't do that, do you?
We charge seventy-five.
Seventy-five. What does Gate City charge?
Seventy-five.
Seventy.
Seventy-five.
Now, we, we have an issue with, uh, the billing agency, I, I can't speak because Janet's not here tonight, but we are talking to another billing agency that we're looking at. If they take vitals, we can bill the insurance for the money. Uh, December alone, we had a hundred and fifty-one calls, fifty of them were refusals. That was fifty that we went, spent the gas, spent the fuel. They refused. Probably a third of those were vitals. So in, in the tape, we could send it, but most likely, well, that, that's not gonna get paid.
Medicare, if you do a turnaround, I'm saying they pay a hundred dollars. If you do a, something that you turn around, keep them going to the hospital, it's a little bit more than the vital side of it. But I'm billing besides that. I'm billing, if they call me, come out there, help my mom up out of the floor and put her back in the bed, we're charging a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Just because it's, we got to be used and used for two, two or three years. Our, uh, columnists and I had the numbers and I think even sent them to the board a year or so ago, I think, but it was six, seven hundred times a year. We was going out just to put people, our floor back in the bed. We're not a home health agency. We're emergency service. So that was eating us up, killing us.
That's still hard to, we, we charge that and we get response from people for that because we're standing here tonight asking for money.
Yeah.
And from the county and people sees that and they know that and then they say, well, the county's giving you money. Why are you charging seventy-five dollars to come out here and?
For a refusal, for what we're doing.
Seventy-five dollars for refusal of transfer. It's, that's a hard sales sometimes.
It is. Well, let me bring up one more thing and not picking on any of you, but Wendell, you say that when a a person stays at your, uh, building for eight hours, they're paid. If they sleep eight hours on duty, they're not paid?
No, they're paid.
They are paid?
They are paid. They work twenty, we work twenty-four hour shifts. We've got six people, three crews. They're paid for twenty-four hours, but they're not paid overtime and that's how we get out of Panama overtime.
Okay, that's over, that's where I was getting to, the overtime. Now, Gate City, you pay overtime, don't you? Is there any way that you could all sit down and, and figure these, these things, figure the overtime, figure the, the denials to your benefit?
If you look at our payroll numbers, there's not a whole lot of difference in our payroll numbers. It don't matter how we pay.
Still works out close.
But my, like, just like, uh, Scott County's, uh, payroll in twenty twenty-three was three hundred and nine thousand. Mine's actually just a little bit cheaper. It was two hundred and nine and I paid round of clock, no overtime. Unless they work more than our three shifts, a hundred and twenty hours in the week, and then if they pick up the shift or work for someone else that's off or then we have to pay them overtime then. They, they give time and a half. And that's Virginia law. That's, that's how we, that's how that's done. If, one reason our payroll's been high in some cases, uh, we've been short crewed and we've had a hard time getting people to work for what we pay. And when we were short crewed, then we had to take five people and work six jobs. So therefore someone had to work overtime all the time. And we were paying overtime every payroll. We have got past that hurdle. We've got full crews in Nicholsville and I think Duffield's working on that in Scott County's, I think.
I'm pretty sure.
There, we're still trying to get employees. And when we don't have employees, that makes our payroll higher. You think it, make it cheaper, but it makes it higher because we've got to fill that spot and that spot is overtime.
Ms. Starnes, uh, based on your analysis, unless there's errors, Nicholsville and Duffield complied with the guidelines that were set out for them?
They have told me they only use theirs for payroll.
Unless there was an error and something's been reported, but there's still question on Scott County?
Yeah, because they, their amount is just, from my numbers that I got from them, it's just, um, a lot of extra.
When did you need money for your payroll?
Today.
Is there anything we can do? Or are you finished with your presentation or y'all need to add any?
Unless y'all have any questions, uh, I mean, I, I can make payroll. I have to take it from somewhere else, uh, borrow from the fire department or use my county funding for, till I get some money. But I do not have enough money to make payroll. I wrote the checks today and I don't have enough money to go.
If we decide to do something, make effective for those two now and wait for them to get back with us, you think that would be appropriate?
If that's the board's wishes.
That's kind of what Chris, uh, Mr. Manus and I had talked about.
We're at your mercy. And I can't, I mean, we, we just.
How much are we talking about?
Mine would be ten thousand.
And Duffield, Roger?
I can make this for, I mean, just make, the fact, I mean, y'all seen it. My payroll runs eleven, a little over eleven thousand dollars every paper, so, every two weeks, so.
But you'll need it before we have another meeting.
Oh, yeah. Unless.
Unless a lot of money comes in.
Unless they turn a whole lot. We're in or no, we, and we don't ever know. I mean, that don't tell us when.
I think something that's all three, that's prior is like our medical billing and y'all seen the numbers and they're on there. You're at the mercy of the billing agency. You may get nine thousand, you may get twenty thousand, you may get eighty thousand. You never know what you're gonna get based on, because they have a certain time period that they can't hold the money. So that puts us in a strain because it's not like we know every month forty thousand dollars is coming. I mean, you can run the same amount of calls, but you do not know that the same.
They're gonna pay.
Exactly. You do not know for sure how much of that forty calls that you run, you're actually getting the money for every month. That's an issue I'm pretty sure you all run into just as well as we do.
And we have people that work for free. Have people talked about volunteers? Have you got volunteers? We have volunteers. We've had lifetime volunteers that helped with this agency. We don't, uh, we don't pay them volunteers anyway.
Are they, are they, uh, trained or are they just drivers?
No, they're driving. I don't train them. It's, and I volunteer.
And I'm, I, I've never been paid on training yet. I haven't.
Did you have a number, Mr. Carter, that you, did you say a number or I, I missed it?
I have a, if this payroll.
You're good. Okay.
This payroll. Now, two weeks later, I'm gonna make that same eleven thousand dollar payroll and you seen what was in the bank account.
When we did this two hundred thousand, we asked for three hundred thousand. We decided to do two hundred thousand and when that, if we used that, then it was gonna be added to.
I mean, given your current burn rate on these funds, you all would have exceeded three hundred thousand anyways. We would have probably needed to put forth a hundred thousand in there.
Well, I use nine. So ninety times three is two seventy.
Right. I'm, I'm just saying from what's been drawn out so far.
Oh, yeah. I, I, I agree with that. Well, I, I thank y'all for your time. Well, I thank y'all for your time. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors.
We appreciate you.
Welcome to the...
Misery loves company.
Oh, yeah, misery loves company. You know, I've told you before, when you see me coming, it's usually not a good thing.
We got nothing for our payroll, so I don't know where we'll stand that sure because I don't have no numbers. Any questions, we'll answer anything y'all got.
We'll get out of the way.
This is not what we're leaving on.
Rick, you be here.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
You're right.
That's the reason I wanted to get the fire department out. That's the reason I wanted to get the fire department out. I think y'all are going to love it. So if you do it once, what's going to happen next month, if they come back again or try to, if we do something, fix it?
I would like to, for them to tell me that they've got it correct because they should have 140,000 dollars there.
You're telling them?
Yes. Except for his billing and mail, I need to add that in. I just think it's Scott County that's very... And I pulled the top, I pulled these numbers directly from what they gave me last week. My calculations down here is what I need to...
Did we do something now or? Wait till everybody else speaks and talk about it more?
Nichols... I was going to have to have more... Some right now, that's usually... Because he doesn't have any.
Well, Nichols was asking, he said he needs 10,000.
He, I mean, he doesn't even have any for payroll.
He said he can move some money around, but the other two seem like they're...
Rogers, okay, yeah, Duffield.
He's just going to pay for two weeks, though.
No, right.
He doesn't know to make this payroll in two weeks.
We're really asking for some kind of support till voting time.
We need to get Scott County's numbers nailed down to make sure they're accurate.
Right, we understand that, but we just wanted y'all to be aware that we ain't going to have to come back and do it.
Wendell, what do you think? What would it have to be to put y'all through to June?
We did about 35 percent, she has a payroll. So we were... I'm talking about all three departments.
Well, I think on the numbers, 200 and a seven aside, we had to dip into that before we actually got to that. So, yeah, because the other money on the ARPA money had done, ran out and she had to back up, pull something out of that. But, I mean, they were some months, I made it, I didn't ask for anything. But I think from July though, maybe here or right now or somewhere, I'm in the 35, 40,000 dollar range. So, I mean...
Worst case scenario, it's 90,000 for Nicholsville. Our payroll's 300, 290, and we're receiving 200 or something from billing. That's worst case scenario, that's what it's been. I've received 55,000, right? The county money in dish, in 20...
For 23, buddy.
No, for the July, from July.
23.
The 23. So you're looking at 45,000 for Nicholsville to July.
45,000 until July.
45, you... He would need that much in reserve. Well, he might not use it, he might not use the 45, he might not use it.
This just put in an emergency account.
This is just if we have to have.
They didn't, they don't want to do payroll.
Right, on payroll, right.
Yeah, that's what they've been doing.
I mean, all we're trying to do is provide services, I mean, that's all we're trying to do.
We realize that.
And I can't fathom the thought of what it would cost the county, shouldn't the county have to take all that responsibility?
You don't even want to talk about it. No. It's me, it's me. But now, if you want to talk about it, I don't want to react.
How's your new answer? They doing okay?
Yeah, we're in our mouth, right? I got 55,000.
Scott County kept saying they've got problems with ours, didn't they? They kept saying they're having some...
So I don't know whether that's related or not.
And they say they don't get charged, or you don't get paid, like, from the person's house, I mean, from your...
You don't get loaded by us, yeah. You only get paid, if we, if we come to Gate City for a call from Nicholsville, which we're second, if we go up Hiltons, we don't get paid from Nicholsville to Hiltons, we get paid from Hiltons to the hospital.
And these, these providers, I mean, they went way above and beyond during the COVID. I mean, they was hours and hours and hours, they sat at the hospital waiting for beds. But they had to do all the care, I mean, no help. I mean, they could be there, one crew states along, they ended up ordering pizza and having DoorDash bring it to the hospital so they could eat their lunch.
Wendell, you've been 89,000 since July. And Rogers has been, for Duffield, 35,000 since July.
So, you know, to be safe, I would need 40 some, 40,000 somewhere there if I needed that.
And to be safe, that you would leave that too?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know what's a subsidy, I mean, it's up to them. I didn't have any money in August, September or October, I don't think. But July, November, December smacked us pretty good, so we had that one. And I think I had to get 5,000 in January, so that I feel...
How, how much money have y'all, that you've got out that you ain't collected this year?
100, in 2023, 174,000.
That you've not collected any of that?
We, we billed 374,000.
Yeah.
We got 270,000.
That's going to end up being charge-offs because it's the insurance contractual agreements and they're not going to pay it. And they won't let you go after the patient either, you can't bill the patient on some of that.
That sounds like a truck and kind of cleaning you money too.
That's about right there.
Yes, I mean, I understand 100%.
But we do a lot of things we don't get, we go to ballgames and stand by, we do things that we don't get paid for.
Search and rescues, ballgames, uh...
Standby for the sheriff's office.
I mean, this is what, this is different things, so. And that's okay, we need to be doing that, that's what we're here to do.
The fire tax would fix all of this. You can take the fire money from the EMS.
Yep, we'll know any money.
We'll know any money. All right, y'all made this call.
Thank you.
What are you on the agenda, what are you saying?
So, when we were meeting yesterday, was it yesterday? Yes, yesterday. To go over the agenda, we talked about this and Frida was talking about that we did have a little bit of money that was left over from maintenance and tools.
Machinery and tools.
Or machinery and tools, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
I put maintenance though. But machinery and tools, we had some money left over. And we wouldn't have to go into contingency for this right here, we could actually use that money that is in that, that's been left over. And you want to tell them the amount?
That's up to you all. But we do have money available in machinery and tools above my estimate for this budget year, so we have a surplus there. So we could transfer a portion of that into the contribution to rescue squads, if that's what the board wishes to do.
I don't think we have a choice.
I don't think we have a choice either.
Well, we can do that or we can do it out of the general fund game.
Well, this would basically be out of the general fund. Just that's where we have extra money right now, we do all the revenue and that's where we had some, that I noticed right off, already this year, at this point in the budget.
And we need our rescue squads and we need our fire departments. And I honestly think that we really need to do this because, I mean...
We have to.
I, I don't want to see somebody...
We got no other choice.
Not get paid and I don't want to see us lose our rescue squads. I mean, I think we honestly, we need to do this.
We can't pick them up either.
Right.
Well, you look at this sheet, we're, we're in pretty good shape on it.
Yes.
We've not got there yet, have we?
No.
No.
Way down the road. Way down. I would have looked at it, see if we're way down or way, or we're just up. We're actually a little bit smaller now, so. Nothing to brag about.
How much was that excess?
Do you want the whole? Right now, in excess in that line item, it's 153,000.
And what's that money for?
It's machinery and tools, so we would need to appropriate and transfer it to the rescue contribution line. So when you decide on a amount, I'll put that in as part of the motion and read this off because I've got the account numbers and everything we need.
They said 45 each, didn't they? That they needed to July.
But we don't know about Scott County.
We don't know Scott County.
There's still a question on their, if they follow the guidelines?
Yeah, we need to take a look at that and then go back and redo them.
Yeah, I would just vote this way.
Now, we need to take care of Duffield.
Scott County did say they have enough money for this payroll.
Can we vote for Nicholsville and Duffield and then leave Scott County to the next month?
Yes.
Maybe, we could do that.
You could put that in the motion that way.
Make that into the motion just for those two.
Do we want to do the full amount that they asked for?
45.
45, 45, be 9,000.
We have a motion to that effect?
I will put that motion in.
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion by Ms. Glover and a second by Mr. Manus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So we have another piece of that that we'll need to do for bookkeeping. So appropriate and transfer 90,000 dollars from account 1000-01104-311041 machinery and tools taxes to 1,000-32300-405616 contribution to rescue squads.
And then, once we get Scott County's information that we need, then we can do in March, look at that.
And as soon as I get that back, I will share with you all by email what their response is. But you'll need to take action on this transfer.
I will. Next motion.
And then I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Addington and seconded by Ms. Glover, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And that takes care of that. We're going to go back and look at, uh... At Weber City now.
If you want to.
Go back and look at Weber City, any discussion? Fire department?
We didn't touch our contingency fund.
33 is still in contention.
Put contingency on that.
King, what'd you say?
I said, we didn't use our contingency fund for that, so we still have all that.
But you're right, we do set precedent with what they're...
And I do agree that if we do one fire department, we need to do them all because it's not fair.
Well, we have done single before in years past. We have to give to one and not give to another, I know that for a fact. I've been here a long time and we have done for one and not done for the other. It's like tonight, we're doing for two fire departments and not doing the other. I won't make a motion, we give them 5,000, y'all fail it if you want to. I've done my part.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Jeter made the motion, Mr. Skeen second, all in favor, say aye.
That'll be out of the contingency.
Opposed? Okay.
He's done a lot of extra stuff that aren't done, like a...
Yeah.
That's what's...
Yeah, he's got, he's got...
That's good.
I don't really want to get that down or try to make something out of that.
Uh, next on the agenda is to approve the fiscal year 25 budget calendar. And that's on the tablet, isn't it?
It is.
Have you had a chance to look over it, I hope you have? We have a motion to approve the budget calendar.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Manus makes the motion and Ms. Glover seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need to appoint two members to the fiscal year 25 budget committee. I have talked with Ms. Addington and I have talked with Mr. Skeen and the chairman has the privilege of appointing those two people to the budget committee. Next, we have approval of the E-Look Green company bid for demolition of the old jail.
And on this one, we're going to go with 117,000?
That was much lower than the other.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Glover makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Put in your motion for ARPA funding to pay for the contract.
I make that motion.
From ARPA funding.
ARPA funding, please.
And Mr. Jeter seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Make the nail up at least.
I'll put in some fire.
Next on the agenda, that's my bad time. Next on the agenda...
Who seconded that motion?
The commissioner...
Darrell.
Next on the agenda is Commissioner of Revenue requesting a Keystone contact, contract. And she will speak to that.
I didn't know you were coming back or I wouldn't put you at the end.
That's okay, it's been a good experience. And what I came for, before I get to that, I'd like to say thank you all for doing the EMS. What you all just said, I've been in the position, I've needed the EMS at my house and I've had to have the fire department at my house. And what would I have done if they hadn't come? So thank you all. But now, here I am, my priority may not be as priority, but I'm 5,100 dollars short on my budget to be able to value the vehicles in the assessment process for this year. And I have 3,000 to go toward it. I need 5,100, it's 45 cents per vehicle. I guesstimated at 18,000 vehicles for the county that will have values. Might be a smid over, but if I come a smid short, it will be 86 cents is what they quoted me versus 45, so I'd rather have some to play with.
Did this extra come from switching from NADA?
Well, we're still, NADA was purchased by JD Power, which cut us off directly. It's my understanding, I inherited this situation. So here I am. And wasn't my first intent to be the first time to see you to ask for money. But if you can see fit, I'd appreciate it. And if not, we'll... And if not, we'll figure out something.
Any discussion? Questions?
You think you can maybe by next year talk to somebody and get a lower bid?
Well, hopefully next year we'll be switched, we're switching to the Munis software. And they are offering, I have talked to Munis. I don't know full details if it's going to be another price or if that's going to come in our contract where we're switching over to Munis.
I'm not being involved in your house.
No. That, I just wanted to make sure I could do a one-year contract and maybe not have to do it another year with Keystone. To answer your question, we just hope for the best.
Hopefully.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Darrell makes the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Manus second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Where's the money coming from?
Contingency.
Contingency.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all for your.
Fifty-one hundred dollars. We need to select two officials for the solid waste committee. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Michelle Glover.
One more, do we have a question?
Is this something that voted on or just appointed by you? What kind of committee is this?
It's a solid waste.
I know, but.
I think they were just appointed last time.
For volunteer basis. Don't have to vote on it.
Okay, that'll be Mr. Danny Castile and Ms. Michelle Glover. The AEP letter that Starnes has done for us to send to AEP about the rates that they're wanting to. Is that on our tablet?
It is.
It is on the tablet. You should have taken a look at it. Do we have a motion to send a letter to AEP?
I make that motion.
Ms. Glover makes the motion. Darrell, Mr. Jeter second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it's approved. Bookkeeping items.
You should have your yellow sheet, your packet.
Please appropriate one thousand five hundred dollars to board of supervisors dues and subscriptions. One thousand dash one 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 zero zero dash four zero five eight one zero for reimbursement received and deposited at the treasurer's office. And appropriate six hundred and fifty dollars to electoral board election officials. One thousand dash one three one zero zero dash four zero three one four eight and one thousand three hundred and two dollars and fourteen cents to printing of ballots. One thousand dash one three one zero zero dash four zero three five one zero for reimbursements received and deposited at treasurer's office.
Do we have a motion to approve the bookkeeping items?
So moved.
And we have a second.
Second.
Ms. Addington made the motion and Mr. Manus second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We have several appointments.
You have one appointment to the Mountain Empire Community College Advisory Board. Rodney Baker has been serving and he did reapply.
I'll nominate Rodney Baker to the Mountain Empire Community College Advisory Board.
Second.
Ms. Addington made the first, made the motion and Mr. Manus second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Definitely nominated Rodney?
Yes.
Okay, then you want a motion? The nomination ceased. The nomination ceased.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Darrell, the motion.
We need to second a vote.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Lisa McCarty has been serving on the courthouse facilities committee and she did reapply.
I'll nominate Ms. Lisa McCarty to the courthouse board or the courthouse facilities committee.
I'll make a motion to see if we vote by acclamation.
Okay, we need a second.
Don't use, do you have further acclamation?
Yes, for the acclamation.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
John Kilgore has been serving on the Crooked Road Board of Directors and he did reapply.
I'll nominate John Kilgore.
I'll second that and then I'll make the motion that nomination ceased and we vote by acclamation.
And we need a second for that.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All vote.
Get all that.
Pretty great few of her pins on.
That's right.
Yes.
Thank goodness for you two. It looks like she's at the very bottom over here.
Recreation Advisory Board for District Two.
Ray Leonard has been serving and he did reapply.
I will nominate Ray Leonard for that, for the Recreation Advisory Board, District Two.
I move that we cease nomination, vote by acclamation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Barry Wolf has been serving for the Recreation Advisory Board, District Four, and he did reapply.
We have a nomination.
I'll nominate Barry Wolf for the District Four Recreation Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Now nomination ceased.
No, nomination ceased.
And we vote by acclamation. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dexter Harmon has been serving on the Recreation Advisory Board at large and he did reapply.
I'll nominate Dexter Harmon.
I'll second that. I'll make a motion that nomination ceased and we vote by acclamation.
Do we have a second, Mr. Castile?
You can do that.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're getting there. Hang in there.
Marcia Hilton has applied for the Southwest Health Authority.
I'm going to nominate Marcia Hilton for this Southwest Health Authority.
I'll make motion nomination ceased and call.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now let's let Sally rest a while and see if you do her report.
I don't have anything to add to my report that you all have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Free this pencil, Cooley.
I did have a question, attorney question.
Okay.
Wake you up a little bit. Some of us are wanting to have town hall meetings where it's open to the public. If they have other things other than this type stuff, healthcare, other topics. Can more than two supervisors attend?
Not more than two. Just to be safe. Mostly not more than one, if you want to be really safe.
Well, part of the question is can three supervisors attend?
Only a social gathering or a VDOT meeting, for example, where you're just going to listen. If you, you all can all go, it's best if you don't sit in all three together. But anything where there's not you all discussing public business as a group, you can attend.
Ready? Okay, Ms. Starnes.
Somebody cut the heater on. It was cold and now it's hot, so.
I turned it down.
I think you cut it up.
Yeah.
Treasurers' account building reports, the green sheet in your folders. Our current available cash is fifteen million, five hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred forty dollars and thirty-four cents. That is your remaining cash after these claims that you're looking at tonight. As you can see on your comparison chart, we are just a little bit above where we were at this time last year and quite a bit above the previous two years. For claims this month, early sets totaled six hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Board meeting claims, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, three thirty-four, sixty-eight for a total of eight hundred twenty-four thousand, one seventy-three, ninety-five. You have five thousand and over items that are also included. You want to take a look through those and see if you see anything you've got questions about.
Were there any questions?
I will make the motion that we repay the bills.
And that amount is total claims, eight hundred twenty-four thousand, one seventy-three, ninety-five.
Motion to Ms. Addington, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Manus second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Under Ms. Selanys, I have a couple of things. We have a bookkeeping item that came in after the bookkeeping was put in your packets. This is from Ms. Rollins, that's the victim witness director that works with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. She is requesting to transfer a thousand twenty-five dollars and fifty-six cents and five ninety-seven oh seven from budget line items that she has money in to salary line item, which those two totaled sixteen hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. She's requesting to increase the assistant director's salary until the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Rollins is going to be retiring and the grant, the way that's going, it's looking like there's a possibility that'll only be one person moving forward, so that's why this request is only through the end of June thirtieth. So the money is in line items. She's just wanting to transfer that into the salary line item. So if that's your desire to approve that request, we'll just need to get that transfer approved.
We have a motion to transfer money from Ms. Rollins.
So moved.
Darrell.
I'll second that.
Ms. Glover second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I've got one question for Kevin Helms if I could. Kevin, on the deliquor taxes, is there going to be sales this year?
Yes.
Got some coming?
Yes, yeah, I've talked to TACs twice, probably looking at early bid.
What about the second notice on taxes?
They'll go out in March.
Go out in March. All right, thank you, sir.
So I have a couple of other things. In your extra packet, there's a summary from the legislative trip that was last week. We met with Mr. Matt Weaver, the Associate Director of Policy and Strategic Development, and Dr. Tamara Holmes, the ARC Program Manager. DHCD is a partner with Scott County in many development areas. Some of the past projects include a CDBG grant for the Riverside Utility Project, Stony Creek Park, that's the parking area, and Sweet Smelling Toilet and the property at, next to Devil's Bathtub, they were instrumental in funding that, the ARC program. The Enterprise Zone designation, Opportunity Zone Planning Grant, Black Dan Water Project, Upper Cliff Mountain Water Project, Valen Hollow Water Project, and the current Afka Planning Grant. We also met with Virginia Tourism President and CEO Rita McClinney and her staff. I presented a PowerPoint that Pam had prepared for me of new events, businesses, and lodging venues that opened in the county in two thousand twenty-three. The presentation also included upcoming plans for Scott County tourism in two thousand twenty-four, including the fiftieth anniversary of Carterfold. We met with multiple staff from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, discussed properties that are available in Scott County and requested their continued help in marketing those sites. We met with the Attorney General, Jason Miares, which also included Dickinson, Washington, Taswell, and Wise Counties. We met with the Virginia Department of Transportation. VDOT staff talked about the National Electric Vehicle Grant Program, Transportation Alternatives Program, Ready, Set, Go, and the Rural Edition Program Guidelines. We also met with David Rose and Kyle Lox with Davenport and Company. I updated them on our investing strategy for this year. The importance of a healthy fund balance was discussed and the importance of planning for school construction funding. We also met with Terry Kilgore, Delegate Terry Kilgore and his office. The importance of funding the natural tunnel pool was discussed in several meetings and we learned that other surrounding localities that were also in Richmond were requesting that funding be in the budget for pool repairs. And then I also included a memo that was sent out to staff. This was an answer to one of the questions that was presented to us in January on telephone protocol. So I typed that up into a memo format and sent that to the staff. And those are, I've got one other thing. The town hall or work session with VDOT, I have sent out a request to VDOT and to Delegate Kilgore and Senator Pugian for April the ninth. So once I hear back, I will let you all know if that will work for the date. And that's all.
And now we will entertain Mr. Derek France over the bar. Wake him up like an addition.
It's always interesting and fun to watch. I really kind of disappointed. I thought everybody was here to see me, but that's not the case. Matt, there, yes, thank you, thank you. You got some true, some true supporters. As usual, mine will be pretty short and sweet. Keith Memorial Park, over the years, we've done a lot of improvements out there, so it's in really good shape. Kenneth and Crystal that work out there for us did a good job. It's a beautiful park and you can see where service helps us as well. Duffield Community Park was one we probably need to start paying more attention to and we have. The last two years, we've done a lot of work out there. It's in much better shape after recent improvements. Right now, we're in the process of replacing the heater and the batting gauge. So it's coming on to, it's getting the attention it deserves. So on the Scott County direct department side, my basketball begins this month. Already I have over a hundred kids signed up and I'm still getting forms in, so that number will probably get to a hundred and twenty. I'm guessing that's very good. Anything over ninety to a hundred for basketball is good, so we're past that number. So really, that's all I've got on the direct department side. That starts, practice starts here in just a couple of weeks. We'll start having games March second, so. Down here on the golf course side, and I know many of you members are new, but our revenue for this year is, it's right now a fifty-nine percent increase over last year at the same time. And that's really significant because last year's fiscal year total was our highest revenue year in over a decade. So we're fifty-nine percent over last year at the same time. Now, I don't want to fudge the numbers or anything. Last year, we had a phenomenal May and June. Now, we should, but we had like an unprecedented May and June that really helped us out last year. But right now, it'll be fifty-nine percent over, especially this January. We had a very poor January compared to last year, obviously because of the weather we had. But we're still at, like I said, fifty-nine percent over the same time last year. I've been here about fifteen years. By far, the golf course is the busiest it's ever been. It's not even close. I want to thank the staff. The staff has worked really hard through this. With that much more people, that much more money coming in, that's a lot more work and plus, you know, keeping the product, which is the golf course, in tip-top shape, you know, there's many members that have been there for thirty, forty, fifty years since it started. And they'll say, hey, the course looks better than it ever has and like that's thanks to you all with some of the equipment we bought. But the staff is really just, I mean, they put the work, you know, that's a lot of long nights for the end of the spring and summer, so. I've got it here on the screen. The deck up there at the Scott County Park and Golf Course, it was in desperate need of repair. And this is the new deck. Of course, the views kind of speak for themselves. That's composite deck on the bottom, horizontal still capable. And then of course, new rails and posts, but really as good as the deck looks, it's, the views are kind of taking precedent too there. Hopefully that composite deck, and that takes a lot of the maintenance out, hopefully that's something that is there for a very long time. But there's just a picture, that's quite my favorite one there. The gap. The gap, you know, so.
That is great.
Yeah. I see that every day. I probably get people on my, I see it, I probably take, take it for granted, but it's not a bad office view out there. I really like the horizontal steel, uh, you can see, not really when you're on the deck, but like looking through the parking lot, you see so much more of the course with that. It makes such a difference, like walking from the parking lot in, how much you see, so.
I was gonna say that.
It opens up a lot.
Opens it up so much.
Yeah, whether you're there or not, but like walking in, you see so much of the course and the mountains and stuff, so.
Our contractor actually recommended that because of the beam.
Yeah.
That she.
Very.
That looks really good.
Yeah, it's, we're, the course about May, into May, we gotta stay in the tree, the, the exposure a little bit. That should last as least till I'm out. Never know, but, um, thank you all for that. And the people that took it down said, hey, you know, it wasn't quite a safety concern yet, but like you all were he's like you were right there at it, like you got every bit of you could out of that last deck, so. Appreciate y'all. It's very much needed, so.
Well, you get to staying in it, maybe you've got service.
Yeah, oh yeah, they know. They know they're on deck for that. Yeah, but they're, they're good to work with for our projects. Of course, right now, it's just picking up sticks a lot from storms, but they've done that too. Uh, rental room, it continues to be used at a very high rate. I think right now, except for maybe just two or three, every weekend, February, March is already, already booked out, so. Um, you've got the rent as well, yep, so you're one of the weeknight rentals, but. And lastly, I'm just gonna end, I always plug Scott. Scott Gerald's a great asset. Uh, Scott helped us last year with a seeding project. We're gonna do that again this year in the spring. Um, the cost to benefit ratio was unbelievable. I think it cost us about nine hundred dollars to do that. And probably one of the most significant things we've done up there, of course. Our fairways right now for February, like somebody's like, hey, did y'all fertilize already? I said, no, it's just the snow and it's where we did that seeding project. That grass is green. The fairways, I cannot believe right now what they look like in February. And like I said, Scott's a great, Scott's incredible. Uh, I recommend anybody that needs.
Tell them who Scotty is in case they don't know.
Scott, Scott Gerald is our, uh, Virginia Tech Extension Agent. Um, he works with farmers, he works with people, residents, I mean, anybody. Uh, and he's smart, man. He knows his stuff and I don't take credit for that. I just said, hey, Scott, what should we do? And he says this. I say, yes, sir. And he's never failed me. And I, I've seen a big difference since we started doing soil testing with him. We do a different fertilizer now. We're just doing more things using technology and his knowledge to, and it's made a big difference up there. Uh, that's why the course looks as good as it does right now. It's a lot of assistance from Scott, so. Uh, can't sing his praises enough. Anytime we have an issue with fungus, a disease that we're not sure about, I mean, I, I think I know what it is. I would say, you know, immediately. He just knows. He, he's a sharp guy, so. Great, great helper to have up there.
Excellent resource.
Yes, he's great, but, um, that's about all I have. I'll try to be as short and sweet as I can. If y'all have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, but if y'all have any comments or questions.
Good job, Derek.